This is the May 5, 2014, meeting of the Revere City Council. All rise and salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members. Councilor Rigo is absent. Councilor Gino?
Here.
Here. Councilor Guanasso?
Here.
Here. Councilor Haas is absent. Councilor Morabito?
Here.
Here. Councilor Novoselfsky?
Here.
Here. Councilor Patch?
Here.
Here. Councilor Penta is absent. Councilor Powers?
Here.
Here. Councilor Riordan?
Here.
Here. Council President Zambudo?
Here.
Here. Quorum is present.
Mr. President?
Council Guanasso.
Mr. President, point of personal privilege. Mr. President, I spoke with Councilor Haas earlier today, and he extends his greetings to the council and to the citizens of Revere, and states that he is recovering quite well, and in all likelihood, he will be back with us on our next regular meeting. He's asked, Mr. President, that the three unfinished business motions submitted by him be enacted tonight, so there's no need to wait for him to be here. He said to just go forward with this evening's meeting. And again, he extends his best wishes to all, and we know he's going to have speedy recovery. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. We're all very happy that Councilor Haas is doing well, and we expect to see him at the next meeting. Madam Clicks, so we'll take up Councilor Haas's motions.
Calendar item number one, unfinished business motion of Councilor Haas relative to requesting the Department of Planning and Community Development to reinvestigate the installation of a pier in Broad Sound at Revere Beach.
Anybody want to take this up? Council Riordan.
I think this is an excellent, excellent idea. It's an excellent time to start looking at it. We are hoping for bigger and better things in our city, and particularly along our waterfront. I think a pier, an active pier, would be a tremendous asset to our waterfront. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President? Council Haas. I mean, Council Guanasso. See, now you've got to be calling your Councilor Haas.
All right. It's the same thing. Two good guys. Years back, I made a motion before this council for a ferry boat to be, you know, put in place in Revere, and I think it would have been a wonderful idea, and I think because I got the idea because the other cities, Salem, for instance, was applying and got awarded one by the state. But I think this pier is part and parcel to that, and I think Councilor Haas is on the right trail with this because this opens up some probabilities for the future and the possibilities that will be probably taking place when we have our beautiful casino right around the corner from this place. So I just think that this makes all the sense in the world to us to look at this and send this on for future development within our community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Guanasso. Anyone else? On the motion, all in favor, all opposed. So voted.
Calendar item number two, motion by Councilor Haas relative to certificates of commendation to officers who participated in Operation High Tide, leading to the arrest of 26 drug dealers.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed. So voted.
Calendar item number three, motion of Councilor Haas relative to an act amending Chapter 134 of the Acts of 2004, authorizing the city of Revere to reduce water and sewer fee liability in exchange for volunteer services by persons over age 60.
Counsel Guanasso.
Is there a public hearing required for this particular motion?
There...
No public hearing. No public hearing is required.
How about we go before Ways and Means of our Subcommittee?
Well, it's going to Ways and Means and Legislative Affairs.
That sounds good.
A joint committee. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay. Joint Committee of Legislative Affairs and Ways and Means.
Calendar item number four, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Mr. Richard Petty, 35 Salem Street, Medford, Mass., to the Revere Resident Employment Monitoring Committee.
Appointments?
Calendar item number five, communication from the mayor requesting a transfer of funds for the restoration of the Louis Pasteur and De Salvo Park playgrounds.
Mr. Mayor.
Welcome. Mr. President, thank you very much, members of the council. I think the letter is pretty direct and speaks for itself. This is a $200,000 grant that is... In order to get the grant, we need to put up $50,000 to get the $200,000, and we've identified where we're going to get the $50,000 from. It is not coming out of any taxpayer-funded monies. It's money that, as you see in the letter, it's some from MGH, and the other is money that we had in the Public Works budget. So, you know, our portion will be, you know, we have the money, we've identified the funding to put up our own $50,000. We just need approval because we need to, in order for us to do the work, we need to pay for it upfront and then show proof that the work was done, and then the state will reimburse us the money. So essentially, we need your authorization to go ahead and spend this money, and then we will be reimbursed by the state after the work is completed.
Counsel Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question in terms of the parks themselves. Was there any salvageable equipment that was, you know, part of... Because I know that the De Salvo Park is a little bit newer, and I know it's already been taken down, but I'm wondering if there was anything that was of use that we could maybe use in another park? Because I know there are some other parks that are desperately, you know, needing equipment.
Yeah, that's an excellent question, Counselor, and I know that every, you know, every piece of equipment was looked at and examined for the, you know, for the possibilities that you just alluded to, but unfortunately, because of various use and misuse, there was nothing that we could really salvage, unfortunately. But I think it would have been, you know, of benefit to the city if we were able to because, as you just said, there are other parks, maybe we could have substituted equipment in or out, so.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Rigo. Counsel Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President. As far as the De Salvo Park, working with the West Revere, they've done a great, great job putting this together. That park was... They tried their best to work with what was there, and it was just, it was contaminated, it was rotted, it was... As a matter of fact, they had to take it, they had to take it out. So, I mean, it's... There was no salvage in anything out of the De Salvo Park. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you for saying that. I mean, I can appreciate where Counsel Rigo was coming from with that. You know, it makes perfect sense. If any of that equipment would have been usable, it would have been nice to either use it at that park or maybe some other parks that were in need. But as you just said, Counselor, I know that that equipment was all examined, and unfortunately, there just wasn't anything of value that we could have used, so.
I agree, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Rigo made a good point. Of course, it would have been great if we could have saved, but they even, I think they even looked at using the equipment at Hill Park, but that wasn't a solution either, so we've got to go new. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Patch. Counsel Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, through you, and I don't have a problem with this in general, you know, because I know we put so much money into Costa Park, and it came out beautiful, and here we... But now I'm talking financial issues. We're taking $26,000 out of the Department of Public Works budget. Now, I know for a fact that we have a vendor that we owe $30,000 to $40,000 for work he's done, and I have three streetlights down in Shirley Ave that the Department of Public Works can't pay for things, and now we're taking $25,000 out of their budget, and I can't get three streetlights fixed. So, you know, and I'm sorry to throw this in front of you at this point, but...
Listen, I share, I share your frustration. You know, there is a lot of, I mean, we would, I mean, this would certainly be a vote that would be voted down if we were going to vote strictly on the fact that there's other work that the DPW could accomplish. I mean, certainly there is. This happens to be a situation where the state wants to give us $200,000, and we're trying to identify funds on how we can make this work, and seeing as the DPW oversees the parks and rec... I'm sorry, the, you know, the parks throughout the city, this seemed like a logical place to look for the money, so, I mean...
And I can appreciate that, but now I have a public safety issue where people are getting robbed at Tedeschi's Market on a weekly basis, if not almost twice a week, because it's been dark in that corner, and I got a little park down the corner, Centennial and De Hone Street, that's dark, and people are getting mugged down there, and I can't see why these lights... I have to wait three years, Mr. Mayor. Three years to get these...
For the streetlights?
Three streetlights.
Well, that, I mean, doesn't National Grid over there?
No, sir. We own those.
Oh, those are the ones on Shirley Ave?
Those are the decorative lights. And, you know, with all due respect, you know, I feel very strongly about this. I've been screaming about it for three years, and this opens the door for me, where, you know, I just have to say something at this point. You know, we need help down there, and this shows that somebody doesn't care about that area, because you're taking that $25,000 and putting it someplace else, and you don't care about the public safety down in Shirley Ave.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel.
Mr. Mayor, can you pledge to us here tonight that we'll find the money for the streetlights down there? It sounds like a serious public safety issue, and...
I will do my best. I mean, in all honesty, and you've seen me address the city council in the past, this is the first time that I've heard that there's a serious public safety issue down there and that three streetlights are out.
It's the first I hear...
If the Councilor, if the Councilor has been trying to get it done, I will be more than happy to join forces with him and try to, and try to get it fixed. I mean, I just, I mean, I came up here to, you know, advocate for these two parks that are going to serve the children of our community.
We're certain...
I can certainly go down the road and try to help with other, with other aspects...
We're certainly not going to block the, receiving the grant for the parks, and we're certainly going to do this, but I think it's obviously a legitimate...
Yeah, of course I will help. He knows that. I mean, you know, him and I talk, he's in my office quite a bit, and we have, we have conversations almost every, I mean, you know, several times a week about different things that need to get done, and we try to accomplish as much as we can. But I think if you, if you looked around, you know, you've got, you know, the various ward counselors that are here tonight, we try to, you know, we try to do what we can in each, in each respective ward. I mean, we just can't fix every problem in the city all at once.
I agree.
Something, I mean, if three streetlights are out, it doesn't sound like a major problem. Three years sounds like an extremely long period of time to fix three streetlights. I share the council's concern. I will do everything I can.
I've also heard from this vendor, this vendor that's owed a lot of money for a long time, and I don't know if it's legit, but we'll talk about it later.
Yeah, no, I'd be happy to sit down and work on it with you and try to get the conversation.
Counsel Rigo, you have something else?
I would appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Just a quick question, Mr. President. Since De Salvo Park and into Counsel Novoselfsky's issue about it being, you know, a budget issue, was there any, was there any talk about having the school department help kick in for De Salvo Park where the Waylon School is right there, and it's kind of a, it would be a school amenity, I think? Was there any conversation about that, you know, to try and take the burden off of the city?
I can throw a little lighter fluid on that fire, maybe. I was involved with the building of the first two schools, heavily involved. I didn't miss a construction meeting. I believe the school department did pay, and the project did pay, to move De Salvo Park to that location, but that equipment was in tough shape way back then, so it's kind of a...
I'm just asking, because given the budget restrictions that we do have, we know, you know, that it's difficult, and...
You know me, I'd like the school department to pay for everything.
If there was conversation with the superintendent about kicking in a little bit of money, I mean, I don't know. It just seems like a good, it would have been a good conversation to maybe have with the school department and say, you know what, this is part of an amenity of the Waylon School, you know, it's only 50 grand. It's not, I mean, in the, in the grand scheme of the city budget, it's not a lot of money, but if, if we can have, if we can pad the DPW budget any way we can, you know, I think it would be helpful. That's all.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, you'll take that under advisement, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Any other questions?
What's the will of the council?
Move forward.
Okay. We're going to, we're going to move to transfer the fund...
Okay.
Wait a minute. We have our financial guru here.
If I may, two things. One is, if you read the second paragraph, not only does the transfer have to come from the $200,000 from the stabilization fund, the transfers actually have to be made of the $24,000 and the $26,000 into the Louis Pasteur and De Salvo Park Playground Fund, so those three transfers have to be made. Okay?
So, is it... We both...
Thank you. We can take them all at once, I believe. Can we transfer all these funds at once?
We can do one separate.
What's that?
We can do the one from the stabilization account separate.
Okay. All right. So you call it.
On the first transfer, shall the city council transfer $200,000 from the stabilization account to the restoration of the Louis Pasteur Playground and the De Salvo Park Playground Fund? Counsel Rigo.
Yes.
Yes? Counsel Gino?
Yes.
Yes? Counsel Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes? Counsel Haas is absent. Counsel Morabito?
Yes.
Yes? Counsel Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes? Counsel Patch?
Yes.
Yes? Counsel Penta is absent. Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Yes? Counsel Riordan?
Yes.
Yes? And Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes? The transfer has been approved. And on the second and third transfers, shall the city council transfer $24,000 from the determination of needs from the Massachusetts General Hospital Fund to the, oh, and $26,000 from the Department of Public Works Park Budget to the Louis Pasteur Playground and the De Salvo Park Playground Fund? Counsel Rigo?
Yes.
Yes? Counsel Gino?
Yes.
Yes? Counsel Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes? Counsel Haas is absent. Counsel Morabito?
Yes.
Yes? Counsel Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes? Counsel Patch?
Yes.
Yes? Counsel Penta is absent. Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Yes? Counsel Riordan?
Yes.
Yes? And Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes? The transfers have been approved. Calendar item number six, communication from the mayor requesting a free cash appropriation for City Hall renovations.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you once again, Mr. President, members of the council. I think the letter, once again, similar to the last one, speaks for itself. We have gone through an extensive assessment of City Hall, and not only regarding the condition of offices throughout City Hall, but the efficiencies of offices in City Hall. And so we've come up with a plan, and that plan, we believe, will probably cost, the overall plan for these renovations looks like it could cost in the vicinity of $1 million, and our plan was to take it out of the $3.2 million of free cash that we have. I would say this right now. I'm not asking you to rescind the letter, but I would ask you to hold the letter and maybe put it in way, I mean, I'm not, you know, you're going to make your own rules here, but, you know, I would ask that you potentially keep it in Ways and Means as we continue to deliberate the budget on our side, because there is a chance that maybe we don't go forward right now with this plan. It's going to depend on how our numbers look with the upcoming budget. We're working very hard in trying to make these numbers work, but as you all know, the pressures that have been put on us through collective bargaining and otherwise, and the seemingly diminishing amount of state aid that we're receiving is, is putting a strain, and while I think collectively, we've all done a reasonably good job in handling our finances, and I think that, you know, is, has been demonstrated by the fact that Moody's has given us two bond upgrades in the last couple of years, it doesn't, it doesn't diminish the fact that we are going to have a very difficult year, I think, this year, and my concern is not as much really for this year as it is for next year. So we were very ambitious. We'd love, we'd love to get this work done. I'm asking that you do deliberate it, maybe put it in committee and talk about it, but I am, I'm not going to press you for an answer on it anytime until we know what our budget is going to be and when I can present the budget to you guys, okay? So...
It certainly is going to Ways and Means, but we'll let some of the counselors speak on it. Counsel Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, through you and Mayor, you know, and I think this is a great, great thing. City Hall has been neglected for many, many, many years, and it is time for, you know, some kind of renovation up here. And is a million dollars a lot of money? Yeah, it is a lot of money, but there's a million dollars' worth, if not more, to be done in this building. I have one potential complaint. Several months ago, Judge Inzoni held a session to see the renovated plans, and we were in the training room. I was the only city councilor that showed up to see that plan, and being in the facilities' management field for 33 years, unless it's changed since then, the only problem I had was a potential redesign of this room and the adding of the cable TV booth in this corner. I have a problem with that. This is a historic room, and I don't think a cable, you know, and God bless cable TV, I know they need some kind of space to run the session, but being in this room, in this corner, with a wall behind us, and not that it's because behind me, I could be sitting over there too, that is not the place, and I think we should, if it's still in the plan for putting there, I think we should find another place to relocate that portion of the cable TV operations center.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, through you and the mayor, will we get a detailed plan of what the million dollars looks like? Because I wasn't able to make that meeting, and I think it was an afternoon meeting, but it would be helpful, I think, to see kind of a line item breakdown of what the million dollars ends up breaking out to and how, you know, what offices are going to be done and what work is going to be done. Because I just haven't seen any details, and I think it would be helpful in making a kind of decision on this request, and, you know, I'm actually glad to hear that, you know, you want us to hold it, because it does seem like there's a lot of potential, there are a lot of things going to be happening in the next couple of months, and they're going to, you know, predict the future of the city. So it's helpful to know that, you know, you're not looking for this tonight, which I'm very happy about.
Right. We'd be happy, we'd be happy to provide you, I think, Judge, you know, we can provide the council with a copy of the floor plans, can't we?
Okay.
And, yeah, I mean, we did have, you know, we did hold one meeting. I know sometimes it can be an inconvenience, particularly if it's during the day, you know, so, but we did try to at least get some input into the process, but, you know, this is not something that is going to happen in the next week or two or three, so, you know, I would be more than happy to ask our Director of Finance to forward over some floor plans for you to look at.
Okay.
You know, as I say, this has been an ongoing discussion and process for probably close to two years now, and so, you know, we not only looked at the condition and what these offices look like, but also the practicality of how these offices are being used. Like, just as an example, you know, the collector's office. As soon as you walk in the side of the building, you hit the collector's office. That is arguably, and I know maybe the clerks might not agree with this, but arguably one of the busiest offices in City Hall. People are in there paying their exercise tax, their property tax, I mean, it goes on and on and on. So you'll see them oftentimes, particularly in the colder months, you know, hanging outside the building because the lines are so long.
Right.
Much to the chagrin of the assessors. The assessors have that big lobby area when you walk in there, and it's more in the middle of the building, so our goal is to kind of switch those two offices. So to give the collectors more room, more space to accommodate the general public, and then naturally, we're going to do everything we can to make sure that our Board of Assessors, who are equally as hardworking, I'm not saying one's hardworking or the other, just who, who has, you know, how do we better serve the public? And, you know, we thought by switching those two offices, that would make sense. So it's not merely just to, you know, make the offices look nicer, which of course we do. We want people to come in, and we want to feel proud of City Hall. We want our employees to feel proud of City Hall where they work, and we want the public to know that we take care of our, our public buildings like we do, like we try to do, but we also want to serve them as effectively and efficiently as we can.
Yeah, and I think part of that conversation is, is also getting people to do business online, you know, I mean, to get them out of, not in the building, and so that people aren't waiting in line is inconvenient. If you're, if you have a more convenient, you know, City Hall, and you have, and I know you've made a lot of progress in terms of bill paying online and some of that other work, but the idea of getting people to easily access City Hall services without having to actually come here is something that we could, we can, it's part of that conversation, I think, you know, we do need to, we need to look at the space that we have and making sure that we are using it to the, to the best that we can. The other thing that I would say is, I know you mentioned a floor plan, but will that include kind of dollar, like a breakdown of construction costs or breakdown of costs by, by office? I just, not to get like into minor details, but having a floor plan is, might be a little different than having kind of a breakdown of, of the cost.
Okay. We have a estimate from the architects of the cost, that's why it wasn't a million dollars, but to continue, what we need to do is actually have to send everything out to bid, and we needed some of this money to send it out to bid, get the forms done and pay the architect to do that. So we won't have that at this time. However, what we've been doing over the last two years is we're going to each office, measuring it out and making certain, the needs of each office, going by the functionality of the office, and making certain that the offices that get switched, the persons being, the officers switched is actually in a better place than they were before, in more useful space, and make sure all the space in City Hall is being utilized to its utmost. So there's not much space here to begin with, but that's what we're trying to do. We've been somewhat innovative. What I would like to do is if you would like a nighttime meeting, and I could have the architects here at nighttime, and you could see the drawings and see what we've done, I'd be glad to do that for the council, and tell me what night of the week, and when you would like it, and I'll make sure that the architects here will be in the training room, and we'll actually go over the schematics of what we plan to do with the building at City Hall. But again, this has been going on at least for two years, and, you know, I think the solution that we have is the best solution that we could definitely come up with, and one that really works everybody that's involved, because there are a number of offices being switched.
So the architects' number, I mean, the estimate's a million dollars, was that, that wasn't broken down in any way to...
There's no itemized cost yet, until we, we have to actually send it out to bid to get itemized cost, so we're not at that point. And part of the money that we're going to use from this amount was to actually put the monies into the, getting the project put out to bid, having the engineers come in and measure out the things they have to do, because we only had a limited amount of money to go up to a certain point.
Yeah, I just don't understand, and I find it difficult, and maybe, you know, some of my colleagues might have more experience in building, but to have just a blanket, you know, million-dollar estimate without a breakdown of the actual work that might be done...
If I can jump in just for a second, I don't want to step in.
No, no problem.
I'm sure what the architect has done was do a needs assessment with the mayor and his team, and through that needs assessment, they can project a renovation cost. Now, that's probably not going to be what it comes in at, but they, they base that on the square footage for the renovations that are going to be needed, so it's not illegitimate to come up with a ballpark of a million dollars for the renovation and then fine-tune it when, when you actually have working drawings. So it starts with a needs assessment. I'm sure they're there. They've gone through the needs assessment, and a qualified architect can come up with a reasonable estimate as to what it's going to cost, and that's all I'm going to say.
Yeah, I'm not gonna go back and forth, but it sounds like we have drawings, right?
We have drawings.
So the architect would be able to use, like have estimates based on the drawings, right?
It's based on the square footage cost of renovation. So if, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure they're gonna be able to break down per room cost for you, if that's what you're looking for, you're not gonna see that. You won't see that until there's a...
Well, not even, I wouldn't say necessarily by room, but even if it were, you know, how much are we spending on demo, I mean, just some kind of breakdown of...
I think it'll make a lot more sense when you see the plans. Counselor Riden.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I thank you for, Mr. Mayor, for being prescient enough to recognize that the city council, there's a lot of questions about this, and I, like Counselor Regal, are not often available for daytime meetings. And in addition to seeing plans, et cetera, however, I would really like to see what the identified deficiencies are in the rationale for doing whatever you're doing to address them. I think that's important for us to know, not only what the problems are, but what the rationale was. It's more than just showing us the plans and there you go. The other thing I'm very, very concerned about is that these plans may not have been developed with any consideration for what's gonna happen with the old McKinley School. We have a building over there that is sitting empty, it will be soon sitting empty, rather, and I haven't heard a word about what the plans are for that building. I know the school department is interested in getting in there, the superintendent's office is interested in getting in there, but it's certainly far larger than the superintendent's office would require. And I'm sure the school department has some other issues perhaps that they want to address there. But I mean, it seems to me that any million dollar renovation in this place, this building, which no one can doubt sorely needs renovation, without taking into consideration what's happening with that building, would be a great, great oversight. And I certainly hope you'd give it some thought as to what's gonna happen with that building across the street. It seems to me that it's, it's just doing one without doing the other is, could potentially be a waste of funds.
Well, if I could just, Mr. President, if I could just address that question regarding the old McKinley School, that actually was one of the great byproducts of us building this new Hill School at Hill Park. The fact that we pick up another municipal building. And as you alluded to, the superintendent, I mean, pretty soon, they're gonna be squeezed out of the high school. So the superintendent is gonna take, will be forced to take his entire suite of offices and move them somewhere. He estimated that he would have to spend somewhere in the vicinity of a quarter of a million dollars a year if he had to go rent a building. So he has committed to the city to invest a quarter of a million dollars annually on systematic renovations over at the old McKinley. So that's another great byproduct of this whole thing, is that we're gonna be able to take that old building and make certain investments on an annual basis over there. My other, my other desire, and I think, I'm not sure, I don't wanna put words into your mouth, but you may have been alluding to it when you talked about what's the overall master plan, and what was our thought process here. It wasn't really, my goal, I don't think, is to move, certainly no offices that are gonna be impacted in these renovations had any plans to move to the McKinley. But I am looking at Inspeccional Services and maybe Veterans Affairs that's over in the Legion Building to potentially move them over there. If that, if that seems to make sense at the time, and it would accommodate it. I know they've got issues over there that I hear about weekly. So, you know, that might be one option for us to use some of that building. We're gonna, you know, it's a good sized building. It doesn't seat 690 kids, excuse me, like the new Hill School, but, but, you know, it's still a good sized building that we'll be able to get a lot of use of, and we'll have some options when the time comes. But as far as the renovations here in City Hall are concerned, and we can discuss this more, but there was, you know, there's no offices that are gonna be impacted that would have otherwise gone over to the McKinley School. The ones that are impacted, just, it would, you know, it would not, those offices would not be, I mean, just as an example, City Hall, for a long, long time, and some of you have been here for a long, long time, you recognize this, has never had a lunchroom. So people in City Hall, if they wanna bring, you know, a sandwich to work, they literally have to sit at their desks and eat a sandwich. Or if they go out for lunch and bring something back, they, you know, there's nowhere to go. So, you know, our goal would be to create a space where employees can go and sit and have lunch, or maybe take a coffee break. So, you know, that's just one of the, you know, that's just one of the things. There's a lot more to it, Counselor, you know, and I'll save you all the, all the, all the details for now, but, you know, I mean, we have spent an awful lot of time looking at, you know, what we could do. And when you look at some of the surrounding city halls and the renovations that people go through, I mean, Malden wants to knock their City Hall down and go rent space or build another building somewhere. Quincy's investing, I think, three or four million dollars into their City Hall. I mean, I could go on and on with, you know, surrounding cities and towns and money that they're spending. And I'm not trying to minimize the million dollar expenditure, but, you know, it's not uncommon for cities to reinvest money into public buildings. I mean, we can go back and forth when the time comes, how much for wiring, how much for roofs, how much for this, but, you know, the bottom line is, you know, we know that we need to do something for all those reasons I stated earlier. And, but as I say, I'm not gonna ask the city council just to, to, you know, sit back and deliberate and, you know, and have intense discussions when I don't even know if I'll be able to go forward. So I'd be more than happy, Director of Finance, Judge Anzoni, has said he'll set up a nightly meeting, he can show you what at least our ambitions are, what our goals are, and hopefully it can be on a night when most of you can attend, and then we'll go from there.
We'll start with a Ways and Means meeting, and we'll bring up the plans then, and we'll start the discussions then.
Okay.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Are you all set? Counselor Powers.
Can I just add one thing, Mr. President? Just one thing, please, is that...
Go ahead, Mr. Director.
...counselor Riden's, about what we're gonna do with the McKinley School, that has been discussed. And actually, there was a $2.5 million bond issue that was passed to renovate the school. And Mr. Dakin, Paul Dakin, Dr. Dakin, actually has promised that he would keep in it, pay his budget, pay in his budget the amounts on the debt schedule for that $2.5 million. So that's something that we already have in the works. The rest of the use of the building is something I think, once we get to the point of where we, the offices that mostly, that are gonna be renovated here are the financial offices, and I don't see them moving offsite because we have to work very closely together. And those are the ones that are gonna be renovated and moved around the most. So it's basically the financial offices plus the city clerk's office is gonna be renovated. And, but every one of the financial offices is gonna get a different space, and additional office for the mayor's office, and that's basically what it is. So looking at that, I'll be glad to have a meeting anytime you give me a time and a date, and I'll have the meeting, and I'll have the architects here to go over with you whatever you need to go over.
Thank you. We'll schedule a Ways and Means meeting where you can come up and do a presentation. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Counselors Regal and Counselor Riden make good points. I certainly, before I could support any authorization of a million dollars, and we don't even know that that's the bottom line, it could be considerably more from this letter I'm reading here, that's just an estimate. Before I could support anything like that, and while I recognize the need certainly for renovation in this building, I think there are several other areas, in my opinion, that need to be addressed with regard to providing services to the residents of this community. And I'll just cite one example, and I believe I put in a motion last week with regard to giving Superintendent Goodwin the monies necessary to address the horrendous pothole situation and trench situation in this city now. I would have been very happy tonight and would have supported, even if we didn't need to put in a Ways and Means, an authorization for that. I know they need a hot box down there, and they need some other things. But what I would like to see would be a schematic of each office, the money allocated approximately for each office, and also there's another component that would have to go into this, and then this would be the wiring of communications and computers, et cetera, that would go into this. You know, maybe that money could come from another source. I'd like to know if that's included in this, or if that's something that we're gonna be coming up later on to take out, the telecommunications money, or just where it's coming from. So I, before I could support a million dollar expenditure, or over a million dollar expenditure, I would certainly wanna see schematics of each office, the cost of each office, and the purpose and use of the each office as it's defined, and the bond, and the transfer of the money from free cash. And also, I'd like to see Mr. Goodwin here giving some money so that he can, if they, if they're overburdened down that city yard, I understand that, they certainly are, but I'd like to see, if we have to bring in a private contract within the next few weeks to address these potholes and trenches, I think that's important, because those are basic services that we should be providing to the residents of this city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. We're gonna talk about all of this in Ways and Means, we're gonna go over the plans, so I don't think it's of any value to be going room by room tonight. Counselor Janino.
Thank you. I think some of my colleagues bring up some great points, and I think that we all know that City Hall definitely is in need for some renovations, for, we owe it to our employees here. We have some of the best employees in the state working on our City Hall, and I'm happy to have them, and we should do what's best by them. But I think Counselor Powers brings up a good point, and that is the DPW yard. And I can tell you right now, 50% of the motions as a counselor that I put in are sent directly to Superintendent Goodwin, you know, I have a pothole, I have a street sign, I have a stop sign, something is going on, it's being sent to the DPW. And they have offices that have tarps over computers when it rains. So I think that, I hope that when we're looking into renovations of city buildings, the DPW is up there, because, I mean, if their technology is at jeopardy when it rains, we have a severe, severe problem on our hand that's emergency nature. So I hope that those buildings are also being assessed, if we're assessing city buildings, and I wish you good luck on this project, and I hope that we see more come if the money is there to fund them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Janino. Counselor Morbido.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, what I've noticed, and most of us as counselors and the rest of the citizens, we noticed, the building, DPW building is dilapidated, it's falling apart. And I know most of the workers there are hardworking, and they're offsite. They're usually at the facility to grab a vehicle or a tool, and they're usually mostly offsite. So in these plans, is it possible to include a office for DPW leadership, like Mr., the superintendent, Donnie Goodwin, Paul Argenzio, Mr. Maglione, a leadership office, and keep an onsite manager at the DPW? I don't know, I would have to talk to Mr. Goodwin for that. But I would like to see an office for the DPW in City Hall. If this, if this is gonna be a first-class City Hall, and we're paying a million dollars, it should be worth a billion dollars, and a citizen should be able to come into City Hall and go into every department, including DPW.
Well, let me just say this, we, we are running out of space here in City Hall, so much so that we are talking with Steve Fielding down at Elder Affairs about potentially moving the Commission on Disabilities maybe down to that location. You know, we, you know, we have a lot of different, you know, needs as a community, right? And we need to multitask a little bit when it comes, and I use that term multitask in a financial sense. I mean, there's a, there's, you could, I mean, if I just put a million dollars in front of the city council and said, where should we best spend it? I mean, everyone's gonna have a different idea. You know, a few of you have brought up the DPW facility. That's gonna be a capital project that we have to take on. I mean, I think somebody alluded to the fact that, you know, things could change dramatically here over the next 60, 90, 120 days. Maybe they don't. If they don't, we have to go along the same course that we, that we've charted for a number of years now. And that is, I mean, right now, we have to see where we are in terms of our levy capacity, where we are in terms of our long-term bonded indebtedness, you know, what's coming off. But the, a new DPW facility is high on my list of priorities. In fact, I could say to you with a, with a close to 100% sense of certainty, that that would be our next major capital project, is to get the DPW a new facility. I know they desperately need one, but to put good money after bad is not something that I would be interested in doing. They've been dealing with a difficult situation down there for a long time. I know they're dealing with a difficult situation. I know what the police went through for a long time over here on Pleasant Street. That building was borderline, I don't even wanna say borderline, I think it was condemnable. And they could have had that building condemned for a number of years. And, and, you know, we finally got to the point where we were forced, the city was really forced, and rightfully so, to build that new facility that's making life easier for our police department right now to operate day to day. We know we're gonna have to do that soon with the DPW, it's just a matter, we have to be able to afford it. So as I say, I mean, I could come up, and we could all come up with reasons on how to spend that million dollars, you know, if you're sitting alone at home and thinking about where can we spend it. I, I can only come up here and ask you to allocate funds as best I see fit. And, you know, this, this is something, as I say, that we've been looking at for at least two years now. And we've got to a point where, you know, we thought maybe we could, that this would be a good use for free cash, and as we've got further into the budget, I don't think that it would be prudent for us to pursue any real definitive, serious conversations until I can get back to you with a budget that makes sense, and that is one that I know we can afford, before we go into taking this money that I've, I've asked for. And, and, you know, and the reason, I sent this letter up, I could have put it in as a late communication, but I know I've been chastised several times over late communication, so I purposely held it back, and I put it on this week's calendar. Well, this week, as you know, we're working on the budget, and so a lot of these numbers now are coming to light. So rather than withdraw the communication and wait for a later date, I said, we'll just put it in, but I just want to advise the council that it's something that, you know, I'm not, I'm not looking for an urgent yes or no on. This is gonna be something that we're gonna have to take up, I think, after we talk about the budget.
Mr. President, through you to the mayor.
Go right ahead.
I guess my question was, is can you include a DPW office, somewhere where this can be representation?
Not in City Hall.
No.
Not in City Hall. We just, we simply don't have the room. That's why I said earlier, we're moving, I think we're forced to move a department out based on these renovations. Right now, we don't have a, we don't have an office. We have, I mean, you know, for example, we have somebody that really essentially works out of planning and development that's working in the basement right now. So from the basement up to the mezzanine, they're going back and forth. It's, you know, we don't have it set up, the building is not set up right now in a way that, you know, we maximize our efficiencies.
So there's no detailed plans? It's based on footage, isn't there?
No, 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 we have absolute detailed plans, but your question was, can we put the DPW up here? And I can't, we don't have an office to put any DPW staffing, we just don't have the room. You know, maybe that could be an option once the Hill School is done, and if and when we move Inspeccional Services over to the McKinley, and we're still not there yet with respect to a new DPW facility, maybe that could be an option that I could discuss with the superintendent and his staff to see if it would make sense to move, you know, you know, the superintendent, maybe the general foreman, into offices over here. But again, that's gonna have to be a discussion that we're all gonna have to have. But as far as the City Hall building, we just, we simply don't have the room.
Because I know a countless amount of citizens who probably go into City Hall expecting to find the DPW department, looking to complain or looking to report in something that needs to be maintained, so.
I know, there's people that look for the building department too, and I gotta send them over there. I mean, there's, unfortunately, we just, this building was built over 100 years ago, and maybe not, I mean, not with the foresight that, and, and, you know, how could they 100 years ago? But not with the foresight of what people have to deal with today, and the different departments that are all involved. So as much as I'd love to have everybody housed under one roof, and I really would, it just, we don't, I mean, it's a physical, it's a physical, it's not, it's not a philosophical difference, it's, I just don't have the space to put them. difference, it's, I just don't have the space to put them. If I had the space, your idea is, is great. I'd love it.
Yeah, I guess my idea is just to have everything, at least the Inspektional Services is within walking distance, everything within close range. I, I think it would, whatever, if we're going to spend a million dollars, I look at it, it should be convenient for the citizens, but that's all. Thank you for answering my questions.
Thanks.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gonasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. It seems to me that we, we're in the right direction with all our dialogues this evening, but I think that the best route we ought to take, and this is only a suggestion, is that when we meet, we meet early fall, we'll have a better direction financially as to where we're going there. Then we can come forward with really definite plans as to what we really need to and require within City Hall. I think before that, we're just talking, because I just solely believe that I would love to see you there and other management there when we go over the descriptions and the locations of where the offices ought to be and where they're going to be. But I think that the whole thing is premised on money, and we're going to know our faith come the end of the summer, and we'll be able to discuss this in a financial manner that will have positive issues before us. We'll say, yes, we can spend X number of dollars now, because we have it. So prior to that, I just think we're shooting a flare in the air, and I think that your, your idea, and certainly your recognition of how the business world should be conducted is bringing your thoughts to this chamber tonight in the way you delivered and what you said, it is all true. It doesn't make much sense for one person in an office to go four flights up and down all day long. It doesn't make much sense that the most heavily trafficked department is scringed in a little area. Well, you need, if you want to service our community and our residents, we have to give them proper space, so when they come in, they're not put in a little booth, and they're given the privacy that they deserve when they pay their bills. And, and to the hard-working people in the Collector's Office, there's no person in the world that would go in there and suggest otherwise that these folks in there aren't working really hard. And sometimes under very tough conditions, based on the fact that everybody walking in the door is unhappy to begin with, because they're paying a bill. No one comes in the, into that office happy. So you have to make their experiences as nice and professional as possible. And, and I think that you're in the right direction there, and I think that you're, you're placing the offices in a, in a proper spot. But I think we all should sit down and see what your real plans are and what, we've heard, I've heard something, I went to that meeting, these council made it, nobody went there. I went there, and I went late, and they showed me a presentation and other things, and I was in that office with Bob Buttons, and he was displaying, you know, displaying all the, and George Anzoni, the treasurer, took me on a tour. So I was there, and, and I didn't get enough facts that day because I didn't think, I thought it was so premature, that, you know, we're talking about renovations, but now we have some sort of idea, what you have in mind, and maybe collectively you'll put some of our thoughts in it, and we can go from there. And I think it's going to be a, a great thing for our city. But again, it's like anything else in life, Mr. Mayor, you need money. You need money to do these things. And we all would love to drive a, a beautiful Lamborghini, but if we're, we, we have to, a pocketbook of a Chevrolet, that's what we have to do. So I just think that, and I also think, Mr. President, as a matter of, a suggestion to the Chair of Ways and Means, maybe we conduct it in the early fall and give it two hours. We have a night that the council doesn't have an agenda, and we have solely for that, discussion for that purpose, because it's going to require some time. And I think it also will serve a dual purpose, because all those individuals at home will have an opportunity to see and hear firsthand, like we are, what's, what's being said. So I just offer that as a suggestion, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let me just say, this is obviously going to Ways and Means, and I appreciate, Mr. Mayor, you're coming up here and telling us that you're not really looking for this until you know where we stand in the budget, and that's, you know, I've come to expect that of you. Your fiscal management of this city has been fantastic since you've been mayor, and we all know that. You, you alluded to the bond, the two bond upgrades, and, you know. When I tell people that from other, I've been doing a little traveling because I've been working with a candidate, and when I tell people the kind of condition we're in, and, of course, I'm, I'm also talking about our potential of this resort casino and so forth, and they ask me how the mayor's doing, and I give a little piece of what, where we've come in the last couple of years, and I'm proud of where you are. So I expect this from you, but I do want to compliment you for coming up here and saying, you've, you've submitted this letter, but you're not looking for a commitment tonight. And I want to just tell my colleagues, if they'll, if they'll let me speak, I just want to tell my colleagues that a million dollars in public renovations is not a lot of money. Trust me. It's, it doesn't go a long way. So it's not an extravagant plan, I can guarantee that, because I know a million dollars is a lot of money, but in public construction, a million dollars is not a lot of money. So anyways, this is going to Ways and Means, and I agree with the Vice President that we should have a long, two-hour, whatever, three hours, whatever it takes, but a meeting that we don't meet, the City Council will have that subcommittee meeting that night. Okay, Ways and Means.
Calendar item number seven, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Heimlich Landscaping and Construction, 65 Burlington Street, Woburn, Mass. as a licensed drain layer.
Appointments.
Calendar item number eight, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of J&amp;A Contracting Services, Inc., PO Box 6476, Chelsea, Mass. as a licensed drain layer.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. President.
Counselor Novosyevsky.
Can we check with them and see if they can get an up-to-date certificate of insurance? Because that one gave us, was 2013.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can ask them to bring that to the Appointments Committee. Appointments.
Calendar item number nine, motion presented by Counselor Riden, that the mayor requests the Traffic Commission to hold a public hearing on a petition to institute overnight residential parking from midnight to 8:00 a.m. on Page Street and Olive Street.
Counselor Riden.
Thank you. I'll be very brief, Mr. President. This was brought, obviously brought to my attention from residents of Page Street and Olive Street. And the only comment I can make is it's getting to the point where we seem to be the parking lot for a lot of our neighboring communities. I'm hearing stories about people leave their cars there for sometimes several days at a time. I am driving off with other people, so I'm, I am assuming that they're using these spaces here just to park their cars when they don't need them, coming from obviously either outside the city or certainly outside the neighborhood. So that's all I have to say. I think it's kind of sad that, that it's getting to that point, it's getting, and I'm not a big fan of, of residential parking per se, but I think overnight certainly is a necessity. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? Still voted.
Calendar item number 10, motion presented by Counselor Powers, that the mayor request Mass DOT to repaint the crosswalks and directional arrows at the intersection of North Shore Road and Riviere Street.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you well know, that's a very heavily traveled area, Riviere Street, North Shore Road. There's kids that cross there in the morning for school. It's crossing God as a difficult time as it is. I think it would be incumbent upon the Mass Highway Department to repaint those crosswalks and also repaint the directional arrows that advise people as to when, where they can take a left and where they should take a left, and where they should take a right, or go straight ahead. So I would hope that the mayor would send the communication to Mass Highway to get that resolved as quickly as possible. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Counselor Janino.
Thank you. While we're on this topic, I think it's also important that we bring up, there's a lot of potholes on that property, that piece of road, so before we paint it, that we repair on our hand. I know there's a huge one on Riviere Street that you can move a tire in, so that we're fixing our problems and the potholes before we paint over them, because we don't want to see a nice painted sidewalk and a big patch over it, so hopefully that can be addressed all in one shot. Thank you.
Want to amend that to ask them to repair the potholes, too, since it's a state road.
That's fine, Mr. President.
On the, on the motion as amended, all in favor, all opposed? Still voted.
Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Counselors Arigo and Powers, that the mayor requests the Traffic Commission to convene a meeting for the purpose of discussing the removal of the no parking signs on the section of Tuttle Street that is south of Riviere Street.
Counselor Arigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very quickly, got a phone call from a couple of residents down there. There are two no parking signs that look like they're probably about 50 years old, and they, there's, you know, some discussion, or there should be some discussion about potentially taking, taking those down. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Arigo. Counselor Powers.
I agree, Mr. President. Normally, we, we restrict parking, whether by permit or no parking signs, in areas that are adjacent to MBTA stations. There's certainly no MBTA station down there, and I think it would be a benefit to the residents if they were allowed to park on, on that street as long as it wasn't impairing the snow plowing down there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? Still voted.
There's a late communication from Ricky Lacentra relative to PUD 1401.
I'm afraid that I can't accept the communication as the, the issue is closed, and that there is no venue to, to accept this into the record.
Mr. President, if I may-
Counselor Powers.
I have a copy, and I would hope every other council would have a copy of the people that were opposed to the 29th Ehr Avenue development, so they could reference it in the future. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. We all do have a copy, and we will reference it. However, I think the request was to add it to the record, and we, we don't have a mechanism to do that. Thank you. No further business. We will be adjourned until May 19th.